Two o'clock, I will call the meeting of the Board and Select Board to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, and recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. I don't see anyone. Use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 874-1275-2272. The password is WORKSHOP, all capitals, W-O-R-K-S-H-O-P. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. Public session is called to order. Any public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, move into the policy workshop with Town Council on Marijuana. The topics can be included in the discussion, our Discussion of Social Equity Policy Model Bylaw, Review and Discuss Revised Comparative Criteria and Rating Scales, Review Proposed Remissions to that Model HCA, Establishing a Local Bylaw License or Not, Is a Bylaw Necessary, Licensing Fees, Discuss Timeline To Do List. And we shall begin. Does anyone have a place that they'd like to start on the Social Equity Plan, on the Model HCA, or on the rating scales? Any preference?
On the Grading, on the Marijuana Licensing Criteria, the matrix, it says Documentation Reviewed and Grading Criteria. I would like to see that under grading criteria does not abut school property, recreation fields, or community vocations where youth congregate be removed in its entirety. And that's my motion. And the reason for it is, is you're penalizing one person who has been a local person here in town his whole life, is a business owner in town that's done nothing but great things with it, and he's been very generous to the community when they need him, and you're penalized. He's starting that person already in a hole, and he's not eligible for those five points. For what? Because if you go to the edge of his property, it's not where the kids, it's the property line. The front door of the middle school is, you know, hundreds of feet away. And, and so, I mean-
It meets the buffer criteria.
But if it didn't meet the, if it didn't meet the criteria, then, you know, wouldn't meet the zoning criteria because it's part of the overlay district, it meets those requirements. So, I think he's more than able to do it, and I guess, I guess personally think that this criteria should be removed from, from the scale.
Okay.
I would second that motion. As a member of the planning board who worked for a very long time in those maps, you know, a lot of the members of the community were able to participate in forming that overlay district, and that is what the town voted on, was the maps and the location. And we took all these things into account, and, and if there's other concerns, it can be addressed further along in the process.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Melissa, do you have any comment?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that we, you know, we've really been cognizant to make sure that we're doing well with our, you know, the social part of this and the equity pieces, and I, I don't see where as we should punish, you know, anyone five points. I think it makes sense, and we did vote on the bylaws, though. I agree with Jean there, so thank you for calling out.
I'm gonna make a couple of comments. No changes could be made to the bylaw went to, went to town meeting, and there were a lot of people that were pretty vocal about this being an issue, a concern for them. And there wasn't a special permit, so for the property that's over by the playing fields off Sandwich Road, that's a special permit property, so if it abuts, you can make some sort of accommodation. So, I, I'm probably gonna vote no, but it's probably gonna pass. But I will say that for me, it may be a consideration in granting points on the business plan, and maybe we have to put something in the business plan about location for criteria, because I would like an owner who abuts school property, or who abuts a place, a location where youth congregate, to talk in their presentation about how they're going to mitigate that and make it, make sure that it's sort of screened or whatever. Because if you have special permit, you couldn't ask for trees or screening of some sort, and when it's site plan approval, you, you really can't make those requests.
I can see your concern there, but these buildings are supposed to be nondescript and not attractive, and they're not accessible, and they're not a place where people congregate or hang out, and they're super secure, you know? I don't think there's any attraction there. I, I, I think that will be mitigated with the, the building.
Okay. Do you wanna decide later where this is gonna go?
Well, we'll take it up for now, and then we can figure out where we can put it later, but at least remove this. My motion is to remove it for now.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? We weren't on a Zoom call, so it's a roll call.
Yep.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, no. So, it passes three, one, zero. Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Well, under, under the business plan, maybe the, I'm trying to figure out where you can fit that in here. Maybe underneath Proposals Own Practices and add a new bullet. How, how to mitigate?
No, I, I, I think we can cover it under Business Plan and Proposal Location Supports the Goals of the Local Comprehensive Plan for Job Creation, Community Design, Stable Business, Local Ownership, and Employment. We'll just leave it there.
I was gonna say that, that would cover a discussion about-
Community design, I, sort of fits in. I mean, we might say something about fits in, but I, I think we're good.
So, I, if I may, Steve Stony Monument Beach, so I, my suggestion would be, you know, moving those five points, either to the ownership or business plan makes a lot of sense, but as, as Jean sort of mentioned, and she was on the planning board when this was done all summer long, was, when it comes to location, I think it's just one simple question on location, is, is it in the MOD? Now, as, as you said-
We've passed, we've, we've passed that motion.
Right.
We've passed that motion, so now we're discussing the points.
But, but I, I do like what you suggested, MJ, that, you know, the, the location of the, of the establishment relative to where it's located, you know, certainly that, that's something the, the board wants the way. You know, you don't want a, a business that's tucked away, hidden from everybody, so if you wanna say, well, part of your business plan is to put your business where nobody's gonna drive by it, then you, you might wanna say to somebody else who is on the main economic corridor for the town, they should be awarded those five points. So, I think business plan or even local ownership, shifting the five points there, I think it makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So, do you wanna, on the business plan, go from forty to forty-five?
I mean, I'd be, either one is, is a better option, but I'd kinda lean towards the local ownership.
Okay.
Forty-five is a pretty-
Okay. Yeah.
That's heavy. I understand that's a very important case.
Ownership, thirty-five points, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I was having a little trouble hearing. Did you, did you wanna shift the points around, or are you good at keeping business plan at forty and location at five?
We have taken location out.
So, you're taking it out completely?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought you were just-
Well, in terms of grading criteria, we're taking it out in terms of grading criteria, in terms of documentation, documentation reviewed or required, legal control of the property and where applicable authorization, use the property as a marijuana retail establishment, a documentation of the proposed location is in the, in the marijuana overlay district. Those two things have to be demonstrated in the application, but there's no rating points for location.
Okay. All right.
Unless you wanna leave the rating points in and just take out the grading criteria. But those are yes or no things, so, you know, they have to do it, so there's not really any grading criteria to it.
Yeah, that's fine. And you know, we wanted to be different, you know, kind of keep it loose and say, oh, you know, this one is in a location that we think will get more traffic, and therefore we're going to rate this one higher than this one. It doesn't sound like that's what you want, so we'll strike the grading criteria pursuant to the last vote, and I'll just put no points, and we can shift the five points somewhere else in the matrix.
Right.
Correct.
I would put it on the ownership.
That's what I think is a, an appropriate place as well.
So, you wanna make a motion, someone?
I move that we eliminate the five-point criteria, rating point from location, and reallocate it to ownership from thirty to thirty-five points.
I second that.
Is there any discussion? Melissa, do you have any comment?
Nope. Everything I would need to say was already said.
Okay. All right, so, any further discussion? Roll call vote. Jean? Oh, go ahead.
Ed Dow, Buzzard Bay. I just wanted some clarification. Is there a definition around born residency? Did we adopt the, the Boston language, the reside five years within the last ten years, or do we know what we're defining as?
It said owners, owners, it's, this should say owners are or have been.
Three of the last five years is what's it mean?
Yeah, but it's not properly worded. Owners are or have been should be included. Born residents for at least three of the last five years.
Thank you.
Owners are doc, have document, so this have, owners have documented business experience. Owners have documented industry experience or industry-sensitive experience. Businesses that are not afforded twenty-five points in the Equity Standards and Equity Parties category of this grading matrix but are certified by the Commonwealth as minority business enterprise, women business enterprises, veteran business enterprise, or otherwise majority women, minority, or veteran-owned are, all of those criteria are eligible, would be eligible for the thirty-five points.
And my motion to include your type, you know, your amendment seats.
Okay. Second the amendment.
Okay. All right, now are we ready to vote? Okay. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes. Four, zero, zero. Okay.
So, was that on the amendment or the actual motion? Did we vote twice?
We could-
He just amended his motion. This is, this is pretty informal here. So, on the Equity Standards Equity, we have documentation of reviewed. I don't, I'm, I'm wondering if we should say something different. Documentation required with application or whatever we're calling our applica, our thing. So, the criteria is documentation required with the applet, instead of documentation reviewed, documentation required with the application, and then the grading criteria is, so Equity Standards Equity Party, documentation showing that the business owner ownership group is pre-verified or verified as a social equity business by the Cannabis Control Commission, the commission, a social equity program participant as determined by the commission, three, an economic empowerment priority applicant as determined by the commission, four, has a priority marijuana-related criminal offense or conviction as a prior, five resides in an area of disproportionate impact as identified for the commission, or six, pre-verified by the commission as black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, Native American, or indigenous descent, or majority of pre, or a majority of pre-verified entity is comprised of individuals that are black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, Native American, or indigenous descent. And the grading criteria prove that the business or individual has satisfied any of these criteria will result in a score of twenty-five. Does, do these criteria match the criteria that are in the guidance now? Some of the guidance criteria seem to have changed a little.
Is your microphone-
You're muted.
Sorry about that. The numbers one through six meet your, the requirements outlined in the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations that you must take into account-
Okay.
-when entering social equity. They diverge from what the commission considers a social equity applicant, but they are still required by this board to be considered as part of your equity standards under, in your matrix.
Okay. Great. All right. Business plan. So, I'm gonna make a motion to change Documentation Reviewed to Documentation Required with the Application on all these categories.
For all the headings?
Yeah.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that?
No.
Okay. This is a roll call. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes. I'm just making my notes. So, we're on business plan, right? Business plan which includes but is not limited to the following. Description of the business operation, including a type of operation, source of product, marketing plans, and future plans for expansion of size of product offering, size of lot, size of building, proposed plan conceptual design for store, including elevation, plot plan including store, parking, and traffic plan, proposed hours of operation, proposed hiring processes, practices, and two, documentation of funding sources available, pro forma, projection of first year of operation, including working capital required, and credit lines available for cash flow. That's the documentation required with the application. Grading criteria, business plan includes management by born residents, commitment to hiring born residents, and annual reporting of the number of employees who are born residents. Second bullet, business plan includes commitment to hiring diversity applicants, minority, women, veteran, disabled, indigenous, and LGBT, and annual reporting of the number of diversity employees. Third bullet, business plan includes operation at startup or future operation as a medical treatment center. Fourth bullet, business plan demonstrates adequate financing to support operations. Fifth bullet, business plan and proposed location supports the goals of the local comprehensive plan for job creation, community design, stable business, local ownership, and employment. And, one, two, three, four, five, six bullet, business plan includes sustainability and green energy initiatives, and seventh bullet, business plan includes community outreach plan in those criteria, grade forty, oh, there's another grading criteria here. Business plan includes a training program, employee manuals, and policies. And that whole category is forty points. Do we have any changes to that, or are we good?
We're good.
Okay. Is there anything else we wanna do? Oh? It's okay.
I'm sorry, Ed Dow, Buzzard Bay, may I make one suggestion there regarding the employment? So, I've tried to hire from within all my local communities every single time. It's not always a hundred percent possible, no matter how much we try, so if you could put in some best efforts language around the hiring of local residents or nearby towns, something to that effect would really be helpful. Thank you.
So, this is like proposal, application proposal criteria, and there is no real, I mean, there's nothing in our host community agreement that it has any penalty, it's just a reporting so that we know.
Sure.
I mean, there's no, there's no requirement, you know, we can't force you to hire, but we're saying you have a plan to do it, and you're committed to do it.
But I think we should all make best efforts to hire our born residents whenever possible. I, I certainly will try, and I'm sure everyone else will here, so, so take that as you will. Thank, thank you very much.
Do you wanna change language or just leave it as commitment?
It says commitment to hiring born residents. It doesn't say it's a, it's-
Yeah, it doesn't hold it for non-legal or anything.
Correct, yeah.
No, no, there's, there's no penalties. Okay. So, are we, are we ready to-
Yeah, except for a comma. A comma between disabled and indigenous.
Okay. Now, that's good, and I almost wanna go back and read the whole ownership thing, because we're like proofing as we go here, and the best way to do it is to actually read it aloud.
That helps.
All right, where are we here in, where, where is your comma that we need?
The second bullet.
Disabled, not disabled indigenous, yeah. Disabled, comma. This is bullet two, under Business Plan Grading Criteria. Minority women, veteran, disabled, comma, indigenous, and LGBT. Do you wanna add a Q? Or do we not do that? I don't know.
Sure.
Is that intentional not to have a Q? Is there a reason there's not a LGBTQ, or is it just LGBT?
So, business plan, which you guys shared with me, so it's fine to use, we can add Q, AI, whatever after.
What do we wanna do?
We'll add the Q while we're proofing.
Yeah, we'll add the Q.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, moving right along, I think we're ready to adopt our grading criteria. Wow, is there anything else?
Motion to adopt the grading criteria.
Well, let's read the ownership first. Let's, just till we do our, we've read the location stuff for documentation required. Ownership, documentation required, documentation of entity, entity ownership including executive team and experience, two, business name, three, Massachusetts business identification number, four, articles of organization, five, bylaws or business operating agreement in cases of limited liability companies or other applicable entity structure, six, doing business as names. So, we're good. All right. Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Yes. So, move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none? Roll call. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes. Four, zero, zero. It's a wrap.
Nice. That's good. Good job. Lot of work before me.
Okay. So, do we wanna do the Social Equity Plan next, or the HCA template next? I don't even know.
Either one's fine.
I, the Social Equity Plan was in our packet. So, this is the, this is like as we discussed it last time, right? And you had a couple of comments. Do we wanna just read this and then see what we think? It seems to work, like, yeah, is that good for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. The Town of Bourne Social Equity Plan. Purpose: The board seeks to further the public interest by encouraging diversity in the local cannabis industry. In furtherance of this goal, the Select Board is adopting this social equity policy. This policy is intended to provide opportunities for local and diverse applicants. Two, definition: unless defined here, defined herein, all capitalized terms shall have the meaning ascribed to them by the Cannabis Control Commission, the commission, in its regulations. Three, application: this policy shall apply to social equity applicants, which shall include, I think, not two, shall include the following types of individuals and entities, so we're gonna strike two. And, A, an economic empowerment priority applicant, which means an applicant who is certified-
Okay.
Okay. All right. So moving way along, I think we're ready to adopt our grading criteria. Well, is there anything else?
Motion to adopt.
Well, let's read the ownership first. Let's, just till we do our, we read the location stuff for documentation required. Ownership, documentation required. Documentation of entity, entity ownership including executive team and experience. Two, business name. Three, Massachusetts business identification number. Four, articles of organization. Five, bylaws or business operating agreement in cases of limited liability companies or other applicable entity structure. Six, doing business as names. So we're good. All right. Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Yes, so move.
Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none? Roll call, Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes. Four zero zero. It's a wrap.
Nice. That's good, good job. Lot of work before me.
Okay, so, um, do we want to do the social equity plan next? Or the HCA template next?
Either one's fine.
I, the social equity plan was in our packet. So. This is the, this is like as we discussed it last time, right? And you had a couple comments. Do we want to just read this and then see what we think? It seems to work like, yeah, is that good for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. The town of Bourne Social Equity Plan. Purpose. The board seeks to further the public interest by encouraging diversity in the local cannabis industry. In furtherance of this goal, the select board is adopting this social equity policy. This policy is intended to provide opportunities for local and diverse applicants. Two, definition. Unless defined here, defined herein, all capitalized terms shall have the meaning ascribed to them by the Cannabis Control Commission, the commission in its regulations. Three, application. This policy shall apply to social equity applicants, which shall include. I think not two, shall include the following types of individuals and entities, so we're going to strike two. And A, an economic empowerment priority applicant, which means an applicant who is certified by the commission between April 1st, 2018 and April 15th, 2018, as an economic empowerment applicant by demonstrating at least three of the following six criteria. One, majority of ownership belongs to people who have lived in. An area of, in an area of, of disproportionate impact for five of the last 10 years. Two, majority of ownership has held one or more previous positions where the primary population served were disproportionately impacted or where primary responsibilities included economic edu, economic education, resource provision or empowerment to disproportionately impacted individuals or communities. Three, at least 51% of the current employees, subcontractors reside in another an area.
So it's fine to add them, this is how the commission has it phrased in their regulations because area of disproportionate impact is a defined term for them, but you can definitely add an in front of.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it just, I'm, I, I don't know, it doesn't read right to not have it.
Yeah, it is the way that it is.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not substantially changing it. I think we should add it so it sounds good. In an area of disproportionate impact and will increase to 75% by the first day of the business. At least 51% of the employees or subcontractors have drug-related quarry of A, why are they leaving out all these words? A drug-related quarry, but are otherwise legally employable in a cannabis-related enterprise. So that's good. A majority of ownership is made up of individuals from black, African-American, black, African-American, Hispanic or Latino descent. Owners can demonstrate significant past experience in or business practices that promote economic empowerment in area, in area, in. That should say areas of disproportionate impact. That's weird. This is, this is weird grammatically.
But we can put area of disproportionate impact.
I would say in, an area of disproportionate impact. Or, or in areas of disproportionate impact. I don't know. Any preference?
I'm okay with it, it's a little clunky, but I, you know. It's legal lingo.
Owners can demonstrate significant past experience in. Or business practices that promote economic empowerment in area of disproportionate impacts.
I'd just say in, an area of disproportionate, that's the same as the other bullets.
In, an area of disproportionate impacts. Or impact, because that's what the other one said.
Singular, yeah.
Singular, yeah.
Yeah, in, an area of disproportionate impact. Okay. B, a social equity program participant, which means the applicant satisfies one or more of the following criteria. One, has resided in an area, see there, it's got, it's got it right there. In an area of disproportionate impact as defined by the commission for at least five of the preceding 10 years, and income does not exceed 400% of that area median income. Two, has resided in Massachusetts for at least the preceding 12 months and. Has a conviction or continuance without finding and, add the word has. A conviction. Or continuance without finding for an offense under MGL Chapter 94(c) or an equivalent conviction in other jurisdictions. Three, has.
Has resided, it should be.
Yep, has resided. In Massachusetts for at least the preceding 12 months and proof. And has proof. That the individual was either married to or the child of an individual convicted or, of an individual convicted or continuance without finding for MGL Chapter 94(c) offense or, or, of an individual who has. Has a, this is weird, has a conviction.
When you put has in the front like that, it's implied that you're using the same verb throughout the whole.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know why they didn't keep the parallel structure, they didn't have Ms. Murray for eighth grade grammar. And so that would be the same. And, and has proof that the individual was either married to or the child of an individual who has a conviction or continuance without finding for MGL Chapter 94(c) offense or an equivalent conviction in other jurisdiction. Four, any individual listed as an owner on the original certificate of an economic empowerment priority applicant who satisfies or more, who satisfies one or more of the following criteria. A, lived for five of the preceding 10 years in an area of disproportionate impact as determined by the commission. B, experienced in one or more of the previous positions where the primary population served were disproportionately impacted or where primary responsibilities included economic education, resource provision or empowerment to disproportionately impacted individuals or communities. C, black, African-American, Hispanic or Latino descent, or D, other significant articulable demonstration of past experience in or business practices that promote economic empowerment in areas of disproportionate impact. C, a social equity business, which means marijuana establishment or medical marijuana treatment center comprised of at least 51% majority ownership of individuals who are social equity program participants or who have been certified as meeting the commission's criteria for designation as an economic empowerment priority applicant or both. D, individuals or entities that are required to be considered under the equity component of the standard evaluation form pursuant to the commission's regulations, which are. Okay, so we have a comment here on a licensed applicant and our comment is, this is sloppy drafting by the commission, a licensed applicant is defined as means a person or entity pursuing a license to operate a marijuana establishment or MTC who has submitted or intends to submit a license application to the commission. Thus, there is no need for the qualifier about pre-qualified individuals because an individual, whether pre-certified or not, is a licensed applicant provided they intend to submit an application to the CCC. You could strike the pre-verified from here and the grading matrix if you would like.
So the point is, is that licensed applicant seems really broad to me and it would include pre-verified. Pre-verified is, in my mind, a type of licensed applicant based on the commission's regulations. So it's unnecessary to have or pre-verified, but you can leave it, this is, again, just copied from the regulations.
Yeah, I'd say leave it. I'd say leave it because we've already done, wrapped up our criteria, so. So we'll have it consistent. So a licensed applicant or pre-verified individual or entity that has. That has, an licensed applicant or an individual that has a prior marijuana-related criminal offense or conviction. A licensed applicant or pre-verified individual or entity that is part of an area of disproportionate impact as identified by the commission. Three, a pre-verified individual that is of black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, Native American or indigenous descent, or a majority of pre-verified entity or applicant, licensed applicant entity is comprised of individuals that are black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, Native American or indigenous descent. Section four, host community agreement equity applicants. To encourage greater participation by social equity applicants, the select board commits the following. A, the select board will inform the Cannabis Control Commission's social equity program as to the availability of host community agreements, HCAs. The select board will also post such information on the town's website and social media. B.
Do we have to post it on social media?
No.
If, if the website.
No, yeah, take out social media. On the town's website, yes.
Just because we don't have.
We don't have a town social media, so we'll post it on the website. Yeah. Okay. Did we, I thought we said we weren't going to waive fees. Are we waiving fees?
I wouldn't.
The select board, well, let's see what it says. The select board will waive all HCA review fees for social equity applicants. Social equity applicants must file an attestation that they qualify as a social equity applicant.
I think we were okay with waiving the HCA.
Review fee?
But we didn't waive any of the.
Well, that's what I meant.
Yes, yeah, that's better.
And we haven't even established what our HCA review fee is going to be and we, it's just like doing a biz, like a permit, so. It's okay. Well, for now, we'll leave in the review, we'll waive all review fees. C, the select board will use a grading matrix to score any and all applications for an HCA. Social equity applicants will automatically receive 25 points under the equity standards, equity parties category. D, the town will create a website pertaining to cannabis sighting and operation in town. The website will include a list of municipal contacts who can provide information related to aspects of the local permitting and approval process. A copy of the grading matrix used by the select board will. A copy of the grading matrix, the select board, take out used. Yeah. The matrix the select board will use to score HCAs will be included on the website. Right?
Yes.
And the select board may reserve one HCA like, for licensed applicants that are social equity businesses, licensed applicants that have been designated as social equity program participants, economic empowerment priority applicants are both individuals or entities verified or pre-verified, including pre-verified individuals or entities that have already been assigned as social equity businesses, economic empowerment applicants or both. So that's what we said last time. The guidance is, gives us more guidance on what happens. What the sanctions are. So one of the things that my question is, if we, if we accept this as we've written it, right? And this only says we may reserve, it doesn't say we will reserve and it doesn't put any timeframes on it. Is the next step for this that we would, if we adopt this, that we would send it to the Cannabis Control Commission to approve?
Yeah, so we need to upload it through the portal and what we're assuming will happen is that they'll review it and give us feedback.
Right.
The regulations don't expressly require them to like approve or disapprove each plan, but they seem to be wanting to do something along those lines.
Okay.
And so, I mean, I think the one thing that we haven't really talked about is how we're going to be like measuring our achievement of these, of, of our goals to encourage social equity. And I think lots of people were hoping the commission would be issuing guidance on that and that subsequent policies can be adopted, but that is something we need to keep in mind as we move forward a year from now, you know, coming back to this and saying what, what are, how have we done in working, urging social equity applicants to come to our community?
Do we need to say something in this? That when we grant a license to someone who meets social equity criteria, that we will designate it as a social equity license in order to keep track of it?
We could definitely do that, we could include another F, we could put it under F, that's fine.
You're gonna, you gotta wait just a minute, I'll, I'll get you. You can stand there.
I'm fine, I'm fine waiting.
Do, anybody have any thoughts on this? I mean.
I think that's a good idea.
It's fine.
The license, yeah.
Well, so that way we, we, we're going to document it, we're going to say, all right, just for example, we got five, we got five applicants, one of them is a social equity, they meet the social equity criteria, they, we're going to grant them a social equity license and we're going to document that we did that. If the other people don't meet that criteria, you know, then they don't, but it doesn't, what, what we've written in our policy doesn't limit us from granting a license to someone else that doesn't meet the criteria, we're just going to grant to the person that does and say that it's a, that kind of a license. Do you have thoughts?
Yeah, I think that's fine, I was just trying to draw some language.
Yeah.
Is the point of designating it to document it just internally or are you then reserving that application moving fo, or sorry, that HCA moving forward for only social equity applicants? If that licensee were to close shop, would that HCA be available to only social equity applicants?
My inclination is to say no.
Okay.
But it's just that we have doc, we have doc, we have granted a social equity license to a social equity candidate, I don't want you want to call it.
Yeah, so when I, so I added for potential F, when an HCA is issued to a social equity applicant, the town will document that the HCA has been issued to a social equity applicant. I don't really know what else you're looking for, but we're happy to, I'm happy to.
Does that sound good?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Remember, we are going to have to give a written opinion as to why we are denying a host community agreement and why we are approving a host community agreement and those decisions need to be uploaded to the county website as well. So that will be a whole nother process and we will address social equity through that.
Okay. Yeah, and I'd like, I think that F is good, that it would, you know, that we would then say, you know, we have granted this, you know, between a social equity candidate, we'll notate or whatever you said. Steve?
Thank you, Steve Sterling Monument Beach. I apologize, I probably should have brought this up when we were doing the social equity, with the metric scoring as it relates to social equity, but now's appropriate because we're talking about it as well. At the last meeting, we talked about expanding the definition of social equity to include social equity participants that have at least 10% ownership in a company and that entitles them to expedited review at the Cannabis Control Commission level. So we talked about that and I think the idea was when you open up, expand that social equity label, then minorities, women-owned businesses, veterans that might otherwise not qualify under the standard rubric, now they, they are pulled into it. And I think, Peter, you said you were in favor of that, I think Melissa said she was in favor, and I believe MJ, you said, well, let's put it in there and, you know, for now. And I think Anne Marie had some concerns, but I don't think she was opposed or in favor of it. But what I would suggest is that we, we circle back to the metric and we add in that language that we talked about, which is that those entitled to expedited review at the Cannabis Control Commission level would also be eligible for those 25 points and we make the social equity policy consistent with the metric. And as I said before, I think, I think, you know, the argument is we're making it more diverse, we're making it more inclusive and we're certainly making it more equitable. So if we have to have a discussion with the state at a later point, I mean, the question to the state is, are we being too equitable, too inclusive, too diverse? And, you know, that's a conversation I, I don't think any of us would mind having with the state. So that would be my suggestion.
I, I, I think you kind of said we were, we go, we were, that would put us beyond what they're looking for in this and it might jeopardize our, but go ahead and speak.
Correct, yeah, and we talked about it and I decided to not include it as my memory. So expedited applicant under the Cannabis Control Commission's regulation means an applicant for a marijuana microbusiness, marijuana craft cooperative, independent testing laboratory or outdoor marijuana cultivator license. A social equity participant, a minority woman and or veteran owned business eligible for expedited review prior to other general applicants. So my concern with including an expedited applicant means that anyone coming in, even if it's a wealthy company owned by white people, if they're applying for a marijuana microbusiness, they're considered an expedited applicant. So it diverges from the social equity goals of the commission. I, I would be concerned about including expedited applicant with, you know, in whole cloth because of those reasons.
Well, I would, I would just respond that under the existing social equity program, somebody who's wealthy and. somebody who's wealthy and white could still come in here and qualify. So we're not, we're not really expanding it beyond what they, what they say they want. Because it, under either, if we, if we stay with what the state says in that narrow definition or we expand it, you are going to get some outliers that really don't fit what we expected when, when the social equity plan was put into play by the state, at the state level. I mean, I know a local attorney who's very wealthy, he's white, and he qualifies as a social equity applicant. And, I mean, if he comes in here, he's got the 25 points no matter what, whereas a woman-owned business doesn't necessarily get that, or a veteran-owned business, or a minority-owned business. We, at the end of the day, we're making it more inclusive, diverse, and equitable. And, and I'm willing to fight for that. And I, and I would hope the board would be willing to fight for that as well. I mean, put it to a vote.
I can say that the commission was pretty specific on what it considers fall within the social equity camp. And so the further we diverge from that, the more at risk we are from, about getting a binding that's, our policy is not in compliance. Now, we definitely can try and we'll, might get a letter from the commission that we can come back and amend it, but I just want to be clear that that's not what the commission is considering at this juncture.
May I ask you?
Yes.
I said we put it in and then what the Cannabis Control Commission tells, it can't be done, or if we do leave it in, yes, this is what will happen, so. I mean, this is our plan, you know, so let's see what, let's see what happens. Worst they can say is no.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
So if you want.
Well, I think we're, I think we're pushing the envelope already. Because the envelope that we're in right now says that 51% of the licenses, which would be two licenses, and we're saying we may hold one. So if we say we may hold one, and we have the points that say this is what we're going to do to do it, we're not going to reserve two licenses, we're going to do it this way, that I think we, the, if we add something else that's pushing the envelope, that we're more likely not to get the thing which to me is more important.
I don't necessarily disagree with you. You're talking about the presumptive route, and we've talked about going that way. I, I don't think that, that's the ideal way to go. I mean, I'd suggest put it to a vote. And, you know, we are, we are doing our own plan that, you know, benefits the town, but also embraces the, you know, the goals of the, the state's program. So I'd like to see it in there. And as Peter suggested, the worst case scenario is they kick it back to us and they say, this is too much, you got to take it out. And if they, you know, I, I question whether they're even going to review it, but that's, that's another matter.
Well, before we vote on this, because I'm not, I'm not prepared to vote on it yet because we haven't discussed the guidance, and we haven't discussed what the guidance now says about what happens if you don't comply. And the guidance, when we talked about it last time, we didn't know what the secondary guidance is, was. And I want to read about that, and we haven't talked about it. So before we make a decision about including that, and I'm also not necessarily comfortable on voting on that without the full committee because there were concerns raised by someone who's not here today. So. I, I have to, I'm going to keep track of time. I want to, I want to read the part about, I want to read the guidance part, and I have to get to the right point to do that. So just bear with me a second.
Are you looking for the part where it talks about complaints and the sanctions?
Yeah, so in the guidance, you, you can sit down because we're just going to talk as a board now. In the, in the guidance document, you know, they, for the sanctions and whatever, they talk, what we talked about last time, which was, you know, the fees, you know, forfeiting all of the community impact fees. I wasn't too concerned about that. But the next piece of it says that if you, after that, there's a bunch of sanctions where they won't issue licenses, they'll do all kinds of, they'll, they'll basically shut you down, your operation. And I, can you, you know the section I'm talking about? Can you read that?
Yeah. Yeah, so it says, if a host community agreement fails to correct the non-compliance conduct, it may result in one of the following: issuance of sanctions, loss of a host community's good compliance standards, identification of a host community lack, host community, should be communities, lack of good compliance standard in a form and manner determined by the commission, or standing from consideration of new licensed applicants affiliated with a host community until a host community's good compliance standard is restored. And so, but, so those are all within their powers. You don't, as outlined in the regulations, you know, query whether the statute gives them that authority, but those are powered and outlined in the regulations. They seem to be indicating that they may use them here. I, I think you will get an opportunity. I don't think they'll jump to any of those measures without a letter and giving you a requirement to fix it within a specified time period.
So did you, when you were considering this, including applicants entitled to expedited review, did you draft any language or have any thought about where we would include that if we were to include it?
So in your social equity policy, it would go under section three D. It would be three E for work because it's not something, sorry, it would be three, three E. It would have to be its own subsection, three E. But I guess my question with that is, I don't think you want all expedited applicants. I don't think you want marijuana craft cooperatives to be considered a social equity applicant. Like, I think you want to be looking at the entity, not the license type. And so, at a minimum, you know, at, you know, at most, I would say you can include a minority woman and/or veteran owned business. I wouldn't jump to include the license types.
So could we do something, I like this threat. Could we do something where our E category would be women or veteran-owned businesses that are entitled to expedited review by the Cannabis Control Commission?
Yes.
So if they were a women-owned business or a veteran-owned business and they were entitled to expedited review by the Cannabis Control Commission, there's some sort of documentation, I assume, of that, that they've entitled themselves with the Cannabis Control Commission for expedited review? Does that make sense? Does that narrow it down?
Yeah.
I'm trying to get to what we're getting at. Like, what's our point here?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. It could be part of E, but then the question is, do you want that also in your grading matrix?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. There's nothing in social equity that lists disabled, right?
Not in the commission's press.
Okay, and so we're not, we're, that's, that's the kind of the question. Those, those are things that I think should be entitled to social equity consideration. And those three things that are entitled to expedited review would, would seem to be added to social equity criteria in the policy and in the matrix. Right?
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do that. I guess from the commission's standpoint, when they think of social equity, they think of communities that were disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. And so, they tend not to think of minority women-owned businesses as those that fall, you know, so, so our view of equity is just diverges from the commission's. And like I said, the further we go, the more likely it is that we can actually have a policy that's not.
Right, but, so if we were in Wareham, we'd be fine because our residents would all be social equity candidates because it's an area of disproportionate impact. But we happen to be in Bourne, which all of these people drove through here to do their business on the Cape, so we should get extra points with that. I, I don't know, how does everyone else feel? I, I'm comfortable with adding those three categories, women-owned, veteran, and disabled business, whatever the, you know, license that has equi, that has expedited review status by the Cape Cod, Cape Cod Commission, by the.
Cannabis Control.
The Cannabis Control Commission. I get DRI on my mind today.
So moved.
And do it as an E, right? Yeah?
Yes, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay. For, for the social equity policy and the rating criteria.
Yes.
Yes.
So you have it in one portion of your grading criteria. Are you talking about moving it to the social equity component section?
No, no, because where we have it in the ownership section.
Right.
It's, that are not afforded the 25 points for the, for the equity. So if they somehow didn't have expedite, they're women-owned and they didn't have expedited status, I mean, maybe they all automatically do that, they would, we have it in two places. We'd have it in the social equity 25 points place. That's where we, that's where they want it to go.
Okay.
That's, that's the point.
And have what the commission requires to include a minority woman and/or veteran-owned business that qualifies for expedited review under the commission's regulations. So we're going to add that to equity standards and equity parties as point seven in the grading matrix and as.
Yeah.
As a part E in section three of.
Yeah.
The so-called equity policy.
And disabled as well, three.
Women, veteran, and disabled.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah. All right.
Well, if you include disabled, then we have to remove qualifies for expedited review because disabled applicants will never qualify for expedited review.
Oh, okay, so it's unnecessary?
Right.
Do they get, is there?
No, the commission's regulations don't give expedited review or consider social, I consider social equity to include disabled individuals.
All right, then, so E is women and veteran-owned business that qualify for expedited review. And F is disabled, I don't know, maybe we just give them points because they're not on the social equity thing, but they get the points the other place. Is that, are you okay with that?
I think that's good, yeah.
Yeah, okay. We'll just, we'll, we won't put disabled in there, we'll just make it the women and veteran-owned.
Okay, do you want to add disabled under ownership in the?
We have it under, I think we already have it under ownership, not, not in the grading criteria for social equity, but we have it, we have it in the ownership.
We don't have disabled there. We just have otherwise, majority woman, minority, or veteran-owned.
Right, so we would have it there.
Yeah, where did I, where did I think it was someplace?
It is where I put the comma. That was something.
It was under the business plan, yeah, so, so, under ownership, that, that fourth bullet with the, the businesses that are not afforded the 25 points, we'd add disabled.
Okay, and I think what you're thinking of is in the business plan, there's a commitment to hiring.
Disabled, yes.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Minority.
So at the end of that bullet, on the, the criteria, that fourth bullet on the bottom of that first page, veteran, business, business enterprise, or otherwise, majority, woman, minority, disabled, or veteran-owned. That's what I would do.
And why are you going to have someone demonstrate that they're disabled? Just concerned about.
Yeah.
So I, I'm just thinking about it.
I would use a presumptive disability. So, so there's certain, you know, when, when, on a, on a disability income policy, there's presumptive things where you've lost two arms or two legs, or you're blind, or there's, there's presumptive disabilities. And that's the kind of definition I would use.
Okay.
Marlene's, Marlene's.
I'm groaning.
Groaning, yes.
So.
If they're lost, yeah, go ahead, Marlene.
Yeah, I mean, because really, all of this, really, we've set this up so that all of, we don't have to, we don't have to require or receive any of this documentation. It's coming, it's coming as certified.
Right.
The CCC. So.
Well, then how would you, what is, what is the way to, what is your options for certifying?
There's no certification process for disabled people under the Cannabis Control Commission regulations that are applicable to this aspect of the process. I think, I can spend some time thinking about it over the next two weeks and next time you meet, kind of presenting with some options, but I'm, I'm concerned about this because unless you just accept at face value anyone that asserts they're disabled, because there's lots of disabilities that we don't see.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and we don't want to get involved in HIPAA.
Or discrimination, or.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we'll, I think we're going to have to just leave social equity as women and veterans.
To that point, if I understand the tweaks you just made, it, it kind of is not in line with what I was suggesting because if you, you can still be a woman-owned business, but if you're not an SDO, you don't fall under the equity plan, then those people aren't going to fall under this most, this latest iteration. So I, I, again, I think if we just circle back to the social equity participants with at least 10% ownership that are entitled to expedited review, that pulls in minority ownership, the veterans and the woman-owned businesses.
And but it also pulls in a lot of other people that our attorney is concerned about us pulling in, so.
But they're, those folks, those folks can already get through the door anyways. And again, you know, I don't want to make the same point over and over, but I like the idea of making it more inclusive and having the Cannabis Control Commission telling us we have to dial it back.
That's what we're doing. We're, we're creating, under our social equity policy.
So under, under.
Under D, under, under section three, application, right? D, it would have to say individuals or entities that are women-owned or veteran-owned and qualify for expedited review by the Cannabis Control Commission are going to be an applicant that meets the criteria.
Well, that's different.
For the 25 points.
But that's different than a social equity participant with a 10% ownership.
Okay, well, why don't you send and write, why don't you write?
Okay.
A suggestion to us because I don't, I'd have to like look at what that means.
I'll, I'll absolutely do that and I'll get it to the board.
I would appreciate it.
This week, and so we have plenty of time for council and the board and in the administration.
And maybe an explanation of why you think that's so important.
Hundred percent, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So, we've made some amendments to this. Do we want to?
Move a motion?
Motion to like, move it to like sort of a final reading?
Peter had a motion on the floor.
Yeah, it's fine.
One second.
As amended. Do you want to vote before, or you're just walking over there? Okay. Any further discussion? All right. This is a roll call. Jean?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, okay, four zero zero. This is social equity plan. In this social equity plan. We might not, we might do that policy review at a regular meeting instead of at a workshop because it's kind of a final reading, and I'd like to sort of expedite it, so not necessarily wait, yeah.
Can we fit, for June 4th or 11th?
No, 11th, not the 4th, it would be the 11th probably. All right. Where are we? Um, all right, where are we on the HCA? Have we approved that? Do we have comments on that, or are we good with that? I don't remember what we did with that last time. I don't know if we talked about it last time. I think we moved to a second reading on the HCA. Was there, were there any other changes to the HCA?
Um, so I circulated a new draft, version three, um, but you didn't get to talk about it at your last meeting in a substantive way. I, I think what we would do is we would say, this is the template we're going to follow, but for each specific application, we are going to consider it, because, you know, there may be situations where we want to diverge based on the nature of the applicant.
Okay, do we have to, um, have the, our template reviewed by the Cannabis Control Commission, or is it just?
No, not the template. So what happens is when they apply for licensure or, and annually thereafter, um, they have to submit a copy of the host community agreement that's been executed, and the commission then reviews it to ensure compliance with regulations.
Okay, so you can't get it pre-approved?
Can't get it pre-approved.
All right, so, um, do we know when, I'm just trying to make sure that we've all got that final thing, do we know when you, let's see?
Let me see, I may be, it may be faster if I just send it to everybody right now, because it was a while ago.
Yeah.
And I, I don't remember.
And I don't know if Jean would even have it, so.
Um, host community agreement model, version three.
I have one that you just sent me.
Send this to everybody right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you know what the, the, the draft that I have in this, cause like, was it four ten? Just later than that?
Oh, did it, did it not?
No, 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 I did, it just, it's, it's, just as version three, I just, the other draft was like a dra- had a, like, a date for the draft, so do we, we don't know. Well, maybe I can look at tools or something.
I think it's from May 14.
Yeah, so that, this is after that. Um, which, how much time do we have? Is there anything in this that you think you would change based on, um, diversity? Let me look at this.
The vast majority of this just tracks with the model, the sections that diverge primarily are the date, term, and termination provision, if you're looking.
Yeah, so the effective date, term, and termination has a lot of redlining in it, and I, um, we could just kinda read, I'm trying to, I had to get to my right view. A lot of this was just like numbering changes, so, um. Yes, this agreement shall be in full force and effect beginning on blank day, the effective date. The agreement shall terminate on the earlier of, one is just a blank if there's a termination date. Um, termination or revocation of the company's final license from the commission, three, permanent cessation of operations as outlined in section 10B, four, failure to pay in any undisputed and certified CIF within 120 days of the date of the commission's certification, provided however that the company shall be responsible for all disputed portion, any invoice if the commission or court law determines such invoice to be proper, a proper charge under general laws, chapter 94G, and notwithstanding the foregoing, the town shall retain the right to enforce the terms of this agreement up to and through the date that it receives the final payments required pursuant to section 5A above. And change in ownership, on section 14, successors assigned changes in ownership, um, the agreement is binding upon the parties thereto the successors' signs and legal representatives is the same, that paragraph. Then events deemed an assignment include, without limitation, one, company's final and adjudicated bankruptcy, whether voluntary or involuntary, two, companies take over or merger, buyer with another entity, three, the company's outright sale of assets or equity, majority stock sale to another organization or entity for which the company does not maintain a controlling equity interest, four, any and other change or ownership and status of the company which requires approval of the Cannabis Control Commission, or five, any assignment for the benefit of creditors. And we took out the prior written approval as required, but if the company sits, submits a change of ownership request to the commission, and, uh, yeah, this looks good.
Just one quick question, and I promise you it's quick.
Yeah.
There was talk about the language, if somebody gets an HCA, but they, they get turned down at the planning board level, that, um, you know, that, that it would kick back, and I think we talked about 60 days or 90 days, is there language to that effect? I don't have the benefit of the document in front of me.
Uh, section, um, four, uh, four D, um, and it says if the company is unable to obtain a final license from the commission within two years, if such local permits and approvals are not granted within six months of execution of this agreement, or if such permits, um, and local permits and approvals are granted but lapse due to non-use, so then the agreement is automatically void, those other conditions are.
Termination once they're in operation.
Right, so, as far as the local level, I mean, the, the board you have to get through after the HCA is the planning board, and I, I would suggest that three months is ample time to get through the planning board. You could, you know, you file at the beginning of the month, you're on that month, um, and even with a couple of continuances, you're still within 60 days, never mind 90 days. So that suggests three months, just so, again, a license doesn't linger, and once you get turned down at the planning board, you're done for at least two years anyways, so, you know, you're, you're out.
So I would err on the side of having a little bit more time than three months, you know, we work with many communities, it could be scheduling issues, there are reasons things get dragged out, I don't think six months is unreasonable for potentially a significant permit, um, I just feel like we should give the applicants the ability to make sure that they're submitting things properly and working with our communities, um, but again, it's a pol- it's really a policy decision.
Well, um, given how overburdened much of our staff is and how things can, like, slip through the cracks or end up having a constructive approval because you missed a notification by one day, I'm gonna, I would suggest leaving it at six months, I don't think that's too overest. I mean, we have things, you know, people wait for things and, you know, I don't know, meetings get continued, so, I'm, I'm okay with leaving it at six months.
I think, I would agree, I think, I, I can see, but three months, three months either way.
I don't feel strongly about it, so whatever.
Okay.
Like, really would.
Six, uh, six months, fine.
All right, so it looks to me that this May 14th document, um, included all the changes that we discussed. Um, I, my suggestion is that we put this in the packet with, um, the social equity plan for the June 11th meeting.
The HCA?
Yeah, put those two things as policy at the regular meeting, so they could be in the packet, they're available to the public beforehand, and.
Version three, I'm sorry, two.
This ver- this, this, this May 14th vers- yeah, version three.
Okay.
In the packet, and then, um, Evie will give us an updated social equity plan with our, with the changes we've made.
Yeah.
And so we'll do that, we'll do those final votes, and then we could include the, um, grading criteria with the changes that we did make after we approved it, so we'll do final approval for all those at a public meeting. I don't know what our agenda looks like for June 11th, but I, I think it would be good to do it at a public meeting.
So, we'll use version three of the HDA and the revised grading criteria and social equity plan after today's discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, one of the things that we're gonna have to talk about is, you're, I think it might be, um, we have to talk about what we need to do to get this to the next step. We're gonna have to submit our social equity plan to the Cannabis Control Commission, that's all we have to submit to them, right?
You're supposed to submit everything that shows you're in compliance with the social equity obligation, so I would submit your plan and your grading matrix, um, I know that they're, oh, I think it went live last week or the week before.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you take a look?
So after we vote them on June 11th, we can submit those up to Cannabis Control Commission, and then we can, um, we can ask the town administrator to develop a plan for going live with this.
You're gonna have to give me a little bit more to work with, but we can start there.
Yeah, on June 11th, we're gonna start having our, we're gonna set our dates for, like, when, when we wanna go live, and then, the other thing then we have to have is the, the whole discussion around the, um, application process, which is probably another workshop that we'll have to have, because we had some of those early discussions about that, but let's, let's, um, let's kind of wrap things up. I think, I think we've done a lot of really good work on this issue, so I want people to know that we have been, um, trying to get things done.
So if you wanna pick a next meeting date, then June 12th is two weeks from today.
I think June 12th does not work.
Or maybe the 19th?
That's Juneteenth.
That's right.
Let me, let me look at my calendar. So, June 12th, there is a ribbon cutting at 11 o'clock in the morning, and then I have a meeting at 4:30, so I could do maybe a, um, an earlier afternoon meeting?
1:30?
I don't know, so what are the, what are the times on Wednesdays that work for you? And I don't know what your schedule is, Jean, we, we.
It depends, every other Wednesday, so this Wednesday, it was an off week.
Okay.
So next Wednesday, I'm on, the following, I'm off, and one, so that's where I'm at.
Where are you on June 12th, are you off or on?
June is crazy, I'll hold on, I'll use my calendar. I should be okay. Just squeeze it in there some more.
Can we do, would one o'clock be all right with you, Mar- Marlene? One o'clock on June 12th?
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's good with me.
One o'clock?
Yeah. Is there anything else we need to discuss at this meeting, or, oh, Evie, do, do we have to do a bylaw, or can we just have a policy? It looked to me in the guidance that they kinda slipped policy in there in some of their places, so.
So, I think we don't really know how the commission is going to enforce this. You're presumed to be in compliance if you do one of the three actions, one is the bylaw, but assumptions can be overcome in other ways, we just don't know what they're looking for in those other ways, so arguably, yes, you could meet their minimum acceptable criteria through a policy, but we just don't know what their criteria are yet.
Okay, so, I, do they mostly, you submit it, and is the process that they tell you if you're not in compliance, rather than they tell you that you are, and then you just wait with bated breath?
So, I think, so we don't, we don't really know, I was talking to Matt, who's the municipal liaison, and he was saying that, you know, they're thinking they're going to review, he's not exactly sure what that's gonna look like, if, if they do find someone not in compliance, it will likely be a letter first with them, with the ability to, um, to fix it, some time to fix it, but I think they're still trying to kind of puzzle through themselves.
Yeah, okay, all right then.
If a complaint is filed, they have to review, so I think that's kind of the more critical issue, is that if we don't issue a host community agreement to an applicant that thought they should have gotten one, what actions does that applicant make around this path?
Okay. Okay, um, I will.
Motion to return.
Return.
Second.
Okay, um, motion by Peter, second by Jean. Roll call vote, Melissa?
I think she just left.
Did she?
She's there.
Yes, yes.
Unless she goes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
That lovely picture.